Wow.
Wow.
Who with what?
It was a World War Two veteran. He had was wounded in action and he had lived on crutches. So he would uh.
He didn't take any crap though. If I didn't need the crutches, he used them as.
The bus came back. Just want me to know that. Back on it, I couldn't feel bad. Oh, he he took a lot of crap. They all did.
All right, it's seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and get started on this September ninth select board meeting. I'd like to start with the warrants. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll number nineteen for one thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and eight cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a uh motion that we approve accounts payable number twenty for fifty-eight thousand fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, aye.
I'd like to move that we accept payroll number twenty-one for one thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and thirteen cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in.
And lastly, I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable number twenty-two for nine thousand seventy-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Do I have a second?
Seventh.
All in favor? I'd like to move that we approve the minutes for um August twentieth. Uh, two thousand twenty-four. Select board meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, aye.
And I'd also like to move that we uh approve the minutes for um August twenty-sixth. Our select board meeting, we had a very short select board meeting that day. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And this is the August twen-
And you have the um.
Yeah, and I'll be up there just for any seconds. And I'd also like to make a motion that we approve the Board of Assessors meeting that we convened on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um. Well, let's move on to citizens' issues. We have a lot of citizens here today. Anybody have um citizens' issues? I have you under um uh committee reports. Any citizens' issues?
I have a very short one.
So.
We've had an issue with an infrared patch map in Anchorage.
Mm-hmm.
With a lot that I own here outside the patch map too. The map in which shows that I own this portion here, which actually is owned by the people who bought the very decent property.
Ah, yes, yeah.
So I own a piece of landlocked property that's seventeen acres and I think the public acreage on the tax guide is twenty-five. So this is a property that you can have with support though.
I will keep both of these and um we'll need to set up a meeting with Evan. Evan would be the one who would talk to you about this.
Okay, will give you a call?
Yep, yep, um. Will you put that in the notes and I'll make a note also?
Yep.
Um.
You know, I write on the back.
That's the property.
Yes.
That don't throw down. Yeah. Chuck, what's your um, how do we contact you? Phone number?
My seven three one five one seven seven seven.
So thank you for having all of this. It'll make it a lot easier. Um. You had your hand raised.
I'd just like to ask you out if you or Evan could do a some more detailed explanation of the uh the change or the fix that was done to Trio. But affected the land evaluation. Um, so I have something to work with. Uh, I I will be coming in to talk about my laws. Uh, but I think in general it'd be nice to have that foundation to understand what the uh the error was, how how it operated. And I feel intensive when it does know how my property affected.
Now that, yeah, that would take some work going through and finding out which who had property more than the two acres or one acre. Um. I know for me, I have three acre lot and a three acre lot and and both of those were affected differently. Um, so I I can ask that they do that, but um do you want to give at least um a little bit more details to the Trio issue?
The Trio issue basically was um the way Evan explained it. They were using fractional acres instead of in the computation. So what he said that the the computation that it was using was more for uh towns like Saco or bigger cities that have very specific lots because they were working with the the depth of the lot and it was there was square roots and and they went back and forth with Trio trying to understand it and figure it out and they then they they realized on their own, no, no thanks to Trio, that that it was being calculated not as an acre to acre but as as computation wise and our acres are not perfect little rectangles. So the the computation that they were using wasn't actually accurately reflecting the amount of acreage that um that should be taxed.
So so for for example, I have um three, three point two three acres on the water. But the two acres was done correctly. But the one acre, one point two three acres, which an acre is calculated, was calculated, something like thirteen thousand, just using my own numbers, was calculated thirteen thousand, but then I was being taxed for this one point two three acres of ten thousand dollars, which doesn't make much sense. Um. So now the way that it's being calculated is that one point two three acres is being calculated at thirteen thousand for one acre and then point two three plus. So basically it comes to be about sixteen thousand instead of ten thousand. And um so that has been an error for, I guess, the last fifteen years. Um.
Well, I think in fact, when we're looking at the sale analysis in the past, one of the areas we're looking at probably where I'm evaluating was on on land.
Well, that makes sense because.
And the other thing that I just liked in fact was properties that hadn't changed hands since the last revaluation. Um, and again, I've got two parcels that are exactly in that that category, a lot of land. And and so I would have expected, well, actually, we would address that and that I was hitting a nice deal. But it would be nice to see and and kind of break it down by how the Trio comes comes working and does to explain it, if I'm laying out so that the landlords who were impacted have some good idea what changed.
Yeah, part, yeah, I, yeah, and part of the challenge has been because somebody will say, well, geez, my my taxes went up sixteen percent. Somebody else will say it went up twenty-five percent. It's like, you're right. There is no consistency because it depends on how much land you had over and above. And so um so it was a bit of a challenge to even try to figure out how do we address any of this. So what um and I know there are individuals in this room who have talked to April and um not April to Ashley and hopefully uh
Thankfully.
you're out of.
No, I don't.
And Evan and and we're trying to deal with those on a one-to-one basis. Um, because when, you know, Ashley will sit you down and show you exactly what went on there, you know, why, why the change? Um, and um, and she'll do that for everybody, anybody who wants it. Um, for a lot of people, I, because I was here last week, just sort of making sure everything was okay. And um and most people were they found fine with it. They just said, yep, I'll I'll pay my my.
So yeah.
It really depends on how much property you have.
Yeah, and which category it falls into.
Yeah.
And that's kind of like, so how are the categories treated? What's the calculation and change? That's that type of documentation will be very helpful in this chat.
Yeah, it was really, you know, if you have land um that's under tree growth or whatever, I believe that that wasn't impacted.
That's true.
Um, it was only land, like for me, I have three acres. It's like one acre that's just above and beyond, that above and beyond is what hurt.
And one of the properties is one of the few in the panel that's also got agriculture, just number of acres that I do is agricultural. The joke for me was when I first put it under agriculture, my taxes went up. So the little change in terms of how it gets calculated for ag, I can consult in a slide, not a big. So it was kind of funny. Uh, now I'm curious, so how is that helping? Is it really should I put it at an anchor, it should have actually lowered against the kind of, you know, open market type valuation for the for the land. But but that's partially, I'd like to see how it all looks because in my case, I've been a little complicated.
I mean, yeah, if you have different land that's in different um under different categories, tree growth, open space, whatever, that, talk to Evan about that, set up a meeting with him. Um, and um, and he'll work with you on that. And that's not to say we don't make mistakes. And um, but um I think the best thing, and I and I know it the people who have had an issue uh have gone to him and um hopefully that's being worked.
But I think we just know how to change work, they know the category should work, so that that would help to remedy some.
Yeah. Gareth.
Something I haven't gotten an answer to yet is whether or not the methodology for assessing excess acreage has changed recently. Uh, on this current, the Trio printout that I did on the the undeveloped law property that I own, there's various categories of of assessment that was, there's the base lawn at forty-two thousand and then there's first uh five acres, which is at a sixteen thousand or whatever it is, and then the next a five to fifteen goes to a lower rate. Is that a new methodology or has that been in effect for some time?
As far as I know, that's been in effect forever as far as certain, you know, certain amount of acres. And then if you have fifty acres, then the first and I'm just throwing out numbers here, but the first five would be at one rate. The next group
Yeah.
would be it is, and it goes cheaper as you go down or less.
I've never seen that property tax done before until this year when when I saw the Trio printed out.
I understand is that's been been in existence um all along. What what wasn't in existence was the fact that if you had an acre and it was worth thirteen thousand, valued at thirteen thousand, you should pay thirteen it it the value should be thirteen thousand. And that's what wasn't happening.
Yeah, I mean, if it's if it's a if it's a matter of correcting a a mathematical calcu- calculation error, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
But if there's been some sort of change in the methodology of evaluating raw land, that's something that should be addressed at the town meeting, right?
No, no, I I would agree, but no, there was no, the only change was simply the fact that um that extra acreage over that base lot was not calculated correctly.
The reason it, the reason I question it is because I was comparing two properties that I had tax bills on and as the as the as the excess acreage increases, the the valuation decreases. And I have one law that is larger that increased a hundred and twelve percent in valuation. And I have a smaller law that increased in sixty-six percent in valuation. So logically, it just makes absolutely no sense how how the how the calculations are 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 reached.
Yeah, have you talked to Evan about that?
I had.
Yeah, I I would talk to Evan and um and he'll sit with you and and look at that step by step. Yes.
Um. My understanding is that the way that properties are calculated is comes from state law and like the state areas, we don't decide, it's not decided.
Yeah, it's not something that the town decided at all. Yeah.
Right, yeah. It's not something we could even bring up at town meeting if we wanted to change.
Yeah, that I don't know.
Uh, yeah. I'm just curious. I think I think the law basically is that you have to um assess excess property beyond your base lot. That's that's kind of the basic law. That's the state.
So, yeah, talk to Evan and he'll take you step by step. And like I said, you know, the we have been known to make mistakes, all of us. So um, you know, if if there is something, then um certainly um we need to check that and then we do an abatement or whatever.
Uh, sure.
Yeah, set up a meeting with with Evan. Any other?
Well, maybe. Oh, tax, oh, so should I talk to Evan?
Go ahead. Yes, yes. If it's if it if it's an issue with your, yeah, because we can't Evan is the one who really you need to talk to about the, you know, he can take you step by step and look at your situation, make sure it's really don't have that handy right now and we're not gonna do that publicly anyway.
Well.
Show them.
Um, he's a at um discussing at Westford Island, and he has a phone line.
He also has a phone line.
We just got here, but I don't really.
You could actually just call our number and just ask to to to, I think when you call the the main line, one of the uh options is the assessor. And just um leave him a message, give him your contact information.
Able to check his uh messages remotely, so.
Yeah, yeah, he's, but then all of them now have their own uh phone lines. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll know that to you too, Gareth.
And Tom?
Yeah.
I know you had.
And you're also. I'm just curious, about the so-called error in Trio, it's been remedied. Appears that town is seeing a windfall in property damage. Why didn't the mill rate it?
They're a- actually, I don't think that it showed that much. I I wouldn't know um right off the bat exactly how much of a difference it made. For some, it made absolutely no differences because they didn't have extra land. It goes to Jeff's question about how many people actually were impacted. Um, I don't know that, but.
Well, I can speak to myself, my property value will not well pay you. Pay you something.
Because you have a a lot of land, yeah.
And I have been in touch with Evan about
Mm-hmm.
I have some substantial covenant and restrictions on the property.
Right.
Uh, in my mind, next to West Side.
Right.
Someone else who had the same acreage, think that could drive that to two acre lots and sell it out of office or made a profit.
Have you spoken with Evan?
I reached out to him via email and I came back.
Okay.
Yeah, I know he'll be back in touch with you. I I saw your email. You were gonna.
No, I was just gonna say also that the the mill rate would have been even higher, but last year we used a good amount of surplus to offset the budget, which we didn't have this year. Um, so with all things being equal, um, in that's where the increase in the mill came from and 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 the obviously the budget, the town spending.
So are you saying it's increased by that much? The budget? That we might put in more policy?
Thirteen, almost thirteen percent from last year, six point five five to seven point four. Yeah. So that's another layer on top of the ex- excess land issue that was also in play.
And a lot of those are out of our control, like the uh RSU, which is a huge amount, went up, that's out of our control. The Lincoln County taxes, that's out of our control. Um, and those both went up a significant amount. No.
The the overall budget, we're we're, if you're being blast, you're fourteen, I mean, a town, the nursing, the nursing. If you look at that, your overall budget, the bottom line, we're at nine point nine percent. It was here next, from from last year to this year. So we were baking in anchors and and wells, it's kind of how to be covered. Uh, by by taxes, but I think, and I don't have a copy of the annual last year, but my recollection was the total town valuation was somewhere around two hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, two hundred and eighty million, pardon. And I think from the commitment sheet that National Sheron, I think it's like three hundred and three million.
Yeah.
So we had an increase. So that was made, the the good news is from all this, it doesn't just feel good, but I would have expected if if they corrected the excess acreage, that my taxes would have gone up. And it would have benefited the town. That, you know, so I think valuations did go up as Tom suggested. But it wasn't enough to 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 help defray uh the acres and what.
Yeah, when uh Evan did the sales analysis, one of the areas where we're still behind is is waterfront in terms of uh valuations, you know.
You know, and I I know nobody likes taxes to go up. I mean, mine went up as well because I have excess property. Um, but I think this is getting us one step closer when we do have a revale. Um, you know, everybody's been saying forever that our land, we are, um, our taxes are really low. Um, and the state is saying that um you know, we're we're having to do the um like last year, we did the twenty-two percent increase for everybody just to try to get us up to where the state says we should be. So uh I think making this correction will be at least one step in the right direction. Um.
There was one of those you kind of talked about last year, this was like the chart for for the job.
Mm-hmm.
They had to make the taxes fairer.
Yep, yep. And as it turned out, it we we at least caught that one error that did happen to to deal with land that um not the not the the houses or whatever else, but just that land made a difference. So.
Well, sure.
What's that, Gareth? Yeah, you should be glad we didn't find it a few years ago.
Right, so.
Yeah.
applications of the correction might be a little less tasteful.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think your increase of steps.
Uh.
I think. I've got a little fortune to eat a lot.
Mm.
Um. Tell me twelve hundred, one five thousand, it all over there. Fourteen, twelve. Shouldn't have been, should have picked swamp and tree buried. I don't know.
Yeah.
Not a spare buy from y'all. Mansion there.
Yeah.
But I think one of the things I noted with the commitment was that there was a big increase in the overlay this year. Uh, so and I thought, well, maybe this was conscious on your part to 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 open it because of the abatement request. You've got seven nine thousand, I think it is, um, so aside and in in that overlay, and that's to address uh vacants.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, but.
Well, let's see.
It's 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 a fair amount, like in basic, we've been more like about twenty to thirty thousand for the overlay.
Yeah, good. Yeah. And I appreciate you all coming in and and sharing your issues. It was um, to me, it's so much better to come in here and talk about it rather than go online or wherever else. And and we will make every effort to on, you know, to 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 work with you. I I know with you, Tom, um, I saw your your email, you know, having to go and look at what you have. And maybe that it's not been earmarked as such, and maybe by earmarking it um and putting it into a classification like tree growth or whatever else, you know, that that could be that something that would help. But if you have a covenant or something or an easement on your property, if it's not specifically labeled as something, then it um, then the calculation may still be the same. So that's something to talk to Evan about. Um.
No, I forward to Evan the uh location number.
Right, right. I saw that. Yeah.
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 Yeah, I think it just formed my global contract in four.
Yeah, yeah. I know, um, it makes a huge difference. What is it? Ninety-five percent tax break?
It it depends.
Yeah.
Actually, it's not based upon it, it's it's based upon the value of the timber.
Oh, okay.
Or.
Oh, the amount of hardwood versus softwood.
So the state gives you a a factor to calculate, so it's it's a little more complicated, but the final line is it is a lot less than.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So and I and I'm thinking with Tom, that might be the the way to to go, especially if you have a bunch of covenants that says you can't do anything with this property anyway. Um.
What I basically wanted to.
Yeah, talk, talk to um Evan and and see what can be done.
What I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I'm a little disappointed that he wasn't here missing anything. Kind of give us some explanations as well, thanks.
Yeah, I I he was here last week and uh two weeks ago, we didn't ask him to to come here this week. Um. Now that I see the group, I should have asked that. Uh, my apologies for that. So. Any other comments or whatever?
Is the is the basic evaluation nothing to do with all these new changes? Simple, the evaluation supposed to be work to itself, well. I said, not right.
I think there's, seems like there should be some connection, but um but, you know, I we we've seen things that are.
I'm talking with woods.
Oh, woods. Yeah.
We're talking about land.
Jeff, you have tree growth. What do you?
Well, I think it was quite low. The property is supposed to be fairly valued by the market value, the economic value. So need restrictions on sale, that affects the market value. So that should be reflected in the assessment, the valuation. Uh, so so bottom line is, yes, it should be based upon what the market would compare. The trouble is knowing fair. You know, two people look at the same piece of property, come up to the price.
And depending on the year and um, yeah, it made a big change in land values. Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, Tom.
Look at the timeframe for, you know.
Yeah. The problem is 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 getting somebody because they're all hooked out, but we're definitely going to be um going out to uh looking for one.
Yeah, we'll we'll be putting out a kind of another.
We have an RFP going out for a an assessor agent, uh, because Evan's going to be um done at the end of December. So somebody to see us through um this the second half of the year, the six months. And then, you know, depending on who applies, um, sometimes they they do um revales as well. Sometimes it's just a one-man show and they walk, so it depends on who applies.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
My understanding that state mandates revales every ten years.
It's a, it's it's strongly suggested at least every ten years. So it's a, it's a suggestion, yeah. But I mean, it's it's it never hurts to do it somehow. It it I I guess when you haven't done it in ten years, it's a huge job. But if you broke it down and did it, you know, maybe once every four years, it'd be much more manageable and and a lot less of a of a job. So I'm not in big favor of waiting ten years to do it, especially the way things have changed. But it's interesting, I went to the uh Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission um meeting a couple of weeks ago. And um the gentleman from Booth Bay was saying that they did their revale in twenty twenty-one and and the values are just, they're not even relevant anymore because of how the the markets changed so much. I I think it is sort of leveling off, so I think we're at a good place now. And it won't probably won't be until uh twenty twenty-six.
Of course, Evan.
Depending on on if we can get somebody. Yeah, that's the big.
You may have seen those gases in their contract recently, and it's for two thousand point seven.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's bad, it's bad.
The problem was that the place that you drafted was uh not bad given our size, you know, if we if we get.
So, do you know who it was?
It was uh RJD.
Okay.
So it looks like, I think I talked to him initially.
Yeah, okay.
But again, they were just, they're also, I think, Woolwich. Uh, so they might be folks that maybe they like to, you know, they're working on a static, come down there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. While you're at it. All right, any other thoughts? Okay, um. Now we've finished that little topic. All right, um, we actually have on our list today to open uh ditching and culvert bids. Do we have any bids?
One bid.
Okay, we'll seal that. So we will open it, we will not make any decisions. We will have a chance to talk about it tomorrow at our regular uh board uh workshop. We will have a meeting at five thirty, I believe it's posted.
Yeah.
Um, and make a decision. What we want, what position's ready. So this is from SR Griffiths. And this includes work for um regular general culvert replacement and ditching specifications, West Shore Road, uh, the main road. And uh a lot of detail in there, and this is for um one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Is the bid. So we will.
And that's that's part of the monies uh that was approved um at the town meeting, but paving is going to be in the spring, but it's all part of that right, the big package. So we'll put that aside. And.
Where it's on, that's the lower West Shore Road. From the main roads, ready going. You pay for saying some lower West Shore Road at the end of the hotel. And.
Okay. Put this in my box. And go get them off. All right, any update on roads?
Just those bids, so that maybe, and paving will be done in the, probably June next year. Uh if people don't hand me for them, because the road is in terrible condition. Uh, not much we can do about that because there's nothing left to pass.
Mm.
Uh the sign vandal was still at work as we all had seen on one forty-four. Uh, the sign vandal was still at work, as we all had seen on one forty-four. Haven't caught them yet. And that's really about it. This point.
Somebody shooting them, what are they doing? It's just rocks.
And bigger rocks, you know, I mean, they're pulling the sign. They're ripping, it's hitting the signs hard that it pulls the handle of the ball right through the sign. And that's what these ones are, pegging by one bolt. I had one, no, I'm sure if I straighten one out, and one she's wanting, but. She hadn't, nothing rocks, sign of the softball.
Yeah.
They're tied up on the edge of the driveway, she says, every one of the rocks, been in the middle of my driveway. And that sign beat all the all these races.
It's a two man job. Yeah, yeah, the ones by me is completely down now, it was upside down for a while and.
Fixed a few of them, it's not really my or the town's responsibility. Uh, like Dawn is, when that one after Dawn, she broke the top bolt. So, swung down, you couldn't see going out of the driveway, I fixed it, fixed a few of them. Like I say, the town ain't paying for that, I'm doing that, but it's, you know, it's people that all would destroy that. Because, you know, only now, it started with brush, and swung theirs. You know, no response from DOT. And that was the Solomons, I mean, uh, what's that, we danced, you know, but it's. They. That's all I could say about that.
Fifteen or twenty years, Jim, it'll be like soccer, and everybody that wasn't paying was on their bill to sleep. Back to right then, it's a, it's your one life.
You know. I had thought about Friday night, three, ten, eleven, ten midnight, so me, yeah, I love the sign, so I'm something that's. I've thought about coming down here, but it's like, I don't trust myself. So, I'm lucky long. This is my case, yeah, that's that part of the, you know.
Jim, uh, this, that you done called it work, you said, it won't happen until next.
No, that's happening this fall, it will happen this fall.
Yeah, okay.
It's the paving, uh, it's, it won't happen till June, okay, uh.
It's prepping.
This is all prep work, you know. The guy railings on Thomas's Hill, cannot come up till three. That works, I don't think they've saw a bicycle, but. I don't know, we can have the winner, back to paving, so I will get new guy. Something, not the toll and cable ones, you know.
All right, committee reports and uh, uncommitted reports, I I um. John, since you're on the planning board and we talked just briefly about the whole water study, um, do you want to? Sort of give us an update on that water study presentation and what you see maybe is the planning board doing?
Yeah, uh, so, uh, first of all, congratulations again to the conservation committee for all of his work that he did. Uh, you know, speaking for myself, I thought the presentation was was very good, very, you know, I care why you're the fat of this job and. Laying it all out for us, uh, one thing she mentioned repeatedly was, um, okay, this will be something for the planning board to consider. You know, planning board for this, and uh, you know, as a member of the planning board, uh, I don't want to do anything. Unless, uh, I get direction, let me select. Be a bank, and a lot of different ways to approach it, you may decide to have a separate committee, uh, take this off like a. Water uh, committee, or you might ask us to take it on planet and review it and make whatever recommendations. To the select board that we would make, uh, so. We meet on Wednesday, in anticipation of that meeting, I put on agenda, direction to you all. Uh, and that kind of hold three categories, either you're not ready to give us direction, which, you know, uh. Great, number two, uh, you are ready to give us direction, you're this, or three, we're not going to give you any directions. Now, we're asking something else, so I just wanted to let you know, uh, we're. Uh, prepared to do whatever you want to do.
And Carol isn't coming Wednesday, right?
I haven't talked to her, I sent her an email, uh, after the session, uh, I haven't heard anything from her yet, so. We haven't scheduled anything, uh, attending, here in. And and, you know, I'm rushing, I just said, uh, we've got Wednesday, it's gonna be then, if you all have. Uh, uh, like so hard, direction for us, ready, we can start talking about it, but if not. Uh, we're staying in the bar.
I know in the past, there was a um, a water committee, Tom, but um, we haven't had one in a while, so what do you guys think? Are you up to letting the planning board sort of settle at least?
I've been looking at the comprehensive plans, and it has some of the things that. She talked about, you know, with straight X and and uh, kind of. Where we were at at that point in time, and there was the the tables where you had kind of the. The responsible parties, um, and and I think that some of these areas were touched on in that report. Um, and and there's already sort of a a a charge out there for. Who would be over overseeing that sort of issue? Um, I know you probably looked at it, yeah, John?
What, copy?
Yeah, yeah, in that respect.
Yeah, once we're in detail, we can actually depend on this uh, for. Uh, fact orders has been looking at it and saying, okay, uh, among the members, are there issues that you all would like to work on? Projects you'd like to work on, related to comprehensive plan, related to updating the uh, the ordinances. Which is something Bob had started, and uh, uh, Bob and Rich has started, so we've independent of this. Event, uh, we're certainly flagged to do that anyway. Uh, of course, we haven't seen a final written report, we've only, we've heard the presentation. So, we don't know what specifically they're recommending.
Gary asked you about, you know, sensitive areas and that kind of thing, yeah.
And I would just, I would just guess that they're going to be taking recommendations. Uh, in addition to, I'm not sure, that's so def- different from the recommendations that were made. With the comprehensive plan, or. I guess there's always additional ones, this time it's changed, we have more data, we have different data, and uh. So, I, you know, I don't know what.
I don't know when she, I know she said that this was uh, not quite the the finished uh, end of the of the process, but. Uh, did she indicate? Do you know when she thought it would be done, because it seems like you wait for that point to kind of take it all in before we.
Yeah, I think she's going to have a written report in the next couple of months, uh, but but then there's that extended part where we're going to be looking at. Uh, wells over a period of time, so um, you know, so it seems like that's a long term thing, but I I do know, um. One of her big issues has been this whole time that, um, whatever, whatever comes out of this, it's like. The hope is that we do something with it and not just say, oh, this was a nice study, we're done, um, and not do anything. Um, so, I I know that's what she's hoping for, um, go ahead. John, finish it and then I'll I'll get.
I don't recall anything in the comprehensive plan about, am I correct?
No.
And and what, you know, the work that they're doing, identifying basically dormant wells to use for collecting data. Uh.
But one of the things, yeah, one of the things she really said several times was was uh, the thing about septic systems and and people. Keeping their septic systems running well sufficiently, um, but yeah, that was a big thing that, um. You know, could be looked at.
So, my my feelings, I take away from that, I mean, there are three areas that we have any control over, one is education. Of everybody and their septic systems and how to maintain them, how to work with them, how they work, there's a lot of people don't even know how they work, so. That's one, that's easy and that's inexpensive, education's cheap, so we can work that pretty well. The second one is coming up with funding perhaps to help people who have malfunctioning. Or failing or the overboard discharge folks, and there may be some funding we can pull in that will help those systems get. Operating, so then, again.
State was paying something like ninety-five percent, Gary, ninety?
So, we should take advantage of any of that that we can put together, and then the harder one is what do we do in the future? And do we want to get into the planning board coming up with ordinances or regulations, do we want to look at? Industrial use coming onto the sideline, because right now, we have it pretty good, you know, but what if Poland Springs comes here? They've done, you know, they go to places and they buy up a bunch of land and then they suck all the water out. Um, but we we don't have any protection against any of that right now, ordinances are. Pretty free, so that might be a place where we can use the planning board to. You know, just come up with ideas or thoughts, or do we want to regulate anything like that, do we want to have? Property limits, and you know, everybody likes property rights until the person next to you sucks all your water. Those are the three places I took out of that meeting that was to kind of do something, thank you.
Hi, Tom, Jeff, you had a.
The testing.
Five chocolate.
Proper comprehensive places, I and Gary were on that, so. The uh, recommendations really were to to do it in the straight X, we went and went down there, and that was the big thing, was we actually got. One of the key recommendations of let's drill a watershed, and then, so that was the big, the key thing, and so the anticipation was. That we would be, you know, and really the responsibility matrix, frequently it's planning work, but also so. So, it's recognizing that we, the number of players in the town who have the the role. But it's uh, it's, I think that's one of the accomplishments, we we're kind of halfway through the comprehensive plan, we adopted it five years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, and and that's one of the major accomplishments, I think, is actually getting a watershed, and so we got something to work.
And I think as far as a committee or whatnot, that I think would come later, you know, I I would want Carol. To be able to come and shoot, you know, did say that she's going to be in touch with you. Um, and I think. Waiting to see what what her final results are, written results, and what recommendations she has, so. I I certainly wouldn't want to put this off long, and I don't think she's going to be putting it off long, I don't remember exactly, I think the grant runs out pretty soon anymore. Um, the 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 grant runs out, because it was only like a two year grant or whatever, the money runs out, but. Um, you know, she's been graded and um. We're not paying her anything that she's worth, you know, because we only had about forty-eight thousand dollars, um, but this long term. Monitoring will be something we've gotten extra money from, um, that she was able to 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 get, um, the the. Machines, the instruments to be able to monitor those, um, so she's had lots of connections, so but that's sort of going to be a long term thing, but in the meantime. I think whatever her final report comes out, um, and we asked her to do this, even though she didn't have the final report yet, because we knew people wanted to know. You know, they've been asking a lot about it, and um, and she said that she felt like she had enough information to be able to share that with people to say, this is. This is what we're finding in general, um, and you know, she did give some options. There in her her presentation when Ralph had asked, you know, what what are different towns doing? So, I I'm hoping this conversation continues, um, and I'd like to see it have, you know, have conversations with the planning board, see what. What you guys think about it, and whether it's something that you feel that you even want to tackle, or or it's so big, we really need to have a special committee. Um, so I think just when you meet Wednesday, you know, have sort of some of that initial conversation, but. Um, I don't think we can really do anything until Carol gets her final report.
Yeah, that sounds good, I I mean, I'm sure, you know, we're going to talk about it.
Yeah.
Just in the general, general force, and that, uh, and other folks may have.
Yeah.
And and if nothing else, uh, it's it's kind of push, I don't necessarily say the reset, but but it's it's added. Momentum. And do see that, we're all, we're looking at uh, elements of the comprehensive pack plan, looking at our. Ordnances, in light of misinformation, maybe there's some just little things that we could be doing, uh, that uh. Uh, would be consistent with, uh, with the whole, so, very thank you, thank you for.
All right, uh, update on the property management work. Right, right house.
We, I gotta put a couple buckets alone, I'll get, yeah.
You got rid of those males, hey?
They've been spread, and it's still there, because I checked.
Didn't flow away. Quite a few windy days.
Yeah.
So, we have the water system back.
Water system back.
So, we can get there.
We got the grass and the jam and jam brick from from your, so, yeah, I was happy to see that, yeah. Even two weeks ago, I did sell up to the north end and make green, because we're at, clearly, we're at the end of. Grass growing.
Those seeds are now.
Yeah.
Are you going to do anything about the uh, cut through the walkway and that, or we patch it and that's all? So, part of the patcher, yeah, I mean, I think we're going to dig that up, patch it, walk away, but.
Unfortunately, it's a very small area. It doesn't come with a small price because. It's so small that you can pave a driveway for what it's going to take time unless to do that patch. Unfortunately, it makes sense, I last, I can mix it in with.
Another little.
That's something, you know, like I told, they will both pay to be down there for the. This fall, very expensive, and that summer, it can also expand it. Mobilization now is a real expense still, never used to be there.
But it makes sense to haul a a truck all the way down to wherever just for this much work, does not, yeah.
Trying to stay away from small trucks, it makes us look bad, because you tell people, you know, it's going to cost you two grand, and you have two grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, because. You could triple the size of that, it's only going to cost you five hundred more.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so other things at the right house, um, we had Gary go and look at the deck. Area and went down and put a kickboard on the around the lower edge. Of the deck itself, so that people can't fall down through the fencing there, or you can't drop your dog down through it. Um, now people can just go up and, you know, feel safe on there, we put a few reinforcements underneath, Gary had suggested putting bolts through. Haven't gotten that far yet, but intend to finish that up, um, did get some of the brackets and then we. We hung and set in some screws instead of just half of a broken nail, so thank you for those of you that put time and effort into. Open that stuff out, uh, the front door window was broken last week. And it's out getting replaced with a piece of plexiglass, so that should be helpful. Um, in case there's any more rocks that get thrown at the windows, we think that was lawnmower activity, not vandals.
That's what I hope anyway, and you found a screen evidently, right?
Yeah.
So, is the screen in now?
Yeah, we find it in the summer, so it wasn't, the doors were usable.
So, this classic glass has the pick, the frame and is doing plexiglass, so as soon as we get it back, I'll get it to you and.
Sure.
You can put it in for the winter or whatever.
Sure. Any any word on the on the roof, the type of the roof?
I don't know, I think we're ready for that.
We've been waiting until the uh, everything was done in the yard, and.
Think you really, really need to assess the trees down there before you do the roof.
You do?
Yeah.
You think they look bad?
I think. You may be wearing a tree or two, because. The guy walking there, really sketchy at best, uh, one by the driveway. Couple out back. I just hate seeing the roof put on and have a tree condemned. And if we're going to cut some trees.
Do it now.
I recommend do it now, because like I said, there's a couple of. The last, I think it's the last one before where we dug the water on. The last, I think it's the last one before where we dug the water on. So left inside of the driveway. It's kind of major. It goes up and branches out and you walk right there. The park heading towards the house doesn't work really. I'm no tree expert, but. When I see a pine tree like this on coastal main.
I'll see if we have any uh locals for the experts and I'll take a run.
Our brains off or take stuff and all. I don't see. I don't see them growing into redwood sized trees.
Gary, have you looked down there to see um? Like be- because I know it's some of it, not not the one that. That Jim's talking about, but if you get closer to the water, are there issues? We would need to be careful about with um, cutting trees down by the water. So if we have somebody go down and look at it, let us know what they think needs to be cut and then.
If you have a hazard tree, you can take it out. If it creates what's considered an illegal opening, you can work with the square. Then you have to re-sign something near take its place and analyze. There's emerging vegetation coming out. You know, you can do the replanting. It does require you, you know.
Yes, I know you and I've had some conversations talking. And I had the uh. The microburst come through. Yeah. Um, but a question that we would want to talk to, but since you're here, we'll we'll just. Mention it. Um, Mary Ellen's on um, is. We looked at the sheds in the back and they don't look like they're used for anything. And would it make more sense to just take them down? Uh, one of them has, the one that's closest to the house has a big hole in the roof, one or two. So it's not being used for anything.
I I think the sheds, we always, this is from the history standpoint, we left that to to reach degrees into Bailey. Has been maintaining the property, you know, greenery around the the house. Uh, but we, I don't know, my Mary Ellen McCracken John now is our new uh president of the friends. Um, that may have opinions, but I defer to the needs of 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 Bailey really minds. If if she doesn't need those. Break, we don't lose them.
Well, I can't imagine that they're being used for anything because they're they're full of holes.
That that one in particular.
Yeah, yeah. And the one that a tree, a tree did hit it, uh, which is why I was thinking about that. But. Uh, again, it's like, why would you replace it? And the windows that are there, if you want to call them windows, they're openings. Without any windows in them. So clearly the weather and whatnot comes in.
But somebody last week was painting. So I I don't know what they thought, but just saying that's because other other parties might have it.
What's that saying about putting lipstick on something? Looks good, but don't say close.
Yeah, yeah, we actually looked at all the 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 other um. Shed as well, and that one has potential. And um, could store some equipment in there. I think there's there are a little. A few odds and ends from the uh ferry landing from the um. From the ramp and float were some things in there for that. I think they were stored in there, but um, it needs to be cleaned out, but. Um, as we've taken a look around, that was just something that came up and um. Now, long happen next week, but we were just wondering what.
What's that? But the shores of the use of the sheds.
Make a one on the other side is where keep it.
Oh, yeah, rich, that's good. And and in that one. And we thought if we ever took that one down that's close, really close to the water there on the. When you're going down on the right hand side, but if you ever took that down, you couldn't ever replace it. Because it's so close to the water. So we figured maybe we don't want to take that down. Just if you cleaned out the inside of it, got rid of all the rats and the mice. It might be, um, it looks like it's in good shape. The roof was okay. But the two in the back behind the house, they just, okay, good. Yeah, before we do anything, we would. Have further conversations, but that was just something that um, happened to think about. Um, but while we're on that, um, we have a committee appointments to make. Um, and so what I'd like to do is uh, we'll sign these after the meeting, so you guys don't have to sit there. But um, we have uh, a series of appointments that we'd like to make for um, for that committee. Um, and so I'm just going to read off the names and can I, is it okay with everybody if I just do a blind tip?
Acceptance is you probably want to do the amendment first because.
Yes, yes.
Can't appoint until.
Yeah, okay.
Committee all nailed down.
So why don't we go then to the amendment?
Yes. Um, so we're amending the town committee's policy. Basically, we're just trying to get this committee set up. So that Jim is in charge and he has a big pool of people who are covered by insurance to tap and help with properties. Um, so hopefully this is the last time we have to amend this for a while. Uh, but we're changing it to unlimited non-voting members, unlimited terms, chair appointed by select board for one year term.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the amendment to the um, Westport Island Town Committee. Policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor.
Alright.
Alright, now. Your way. Okay. And we're hoping this will grow. This is our starting point. This is based on people that have come to meetings and have. Offered uh, to be part of this. Um, so um. And as I said, I'll just list them and uh, unless there's an issue, then we'll just appoint them all. Um. We'll make, um, we're asking for Jim Cromwell to be the chair. Um, Bonnie Hamilton. Chris. Malier, did I say it right? Thank you. Dennis Dunbar, uh, Lizley. Hope Rally, Jeff Tarbox, Judy Pagan, Marty Landor, Mary Denzer, Ted Christie, Tina Sidney, Gretchen McNamara. And Debbie Lawrenson. Um, so.
You can just make a motion to appoint the list.
Yep, yep. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept that list as is. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, so we'll sign all those later. Before we leave tonight. Okay. Um, we have other um, business and actually I'm going to start with um. The Wormwood property that has been on our agenda for quite a while and um. We had asked Gary uh, as our CEO to have a look at the property. And he had a suggestion for us. I'm gonna read that. Um, the suggestion for uh, Chris Wormwood was that um. His plan is to uh neatly stack the remaining wood pallets in a row parallel to green leaf road to be used for heating. The garage and reclaiming lumber for for woodworking projects. Rec the three portable garages. He's already gotten the um, permission to do that. Uh, as depicted on building permit twenty-four fifteen. Provided the buildings are no closer than twenty feet to the property line or forty feet from the sideline of green leaf road. Remove or relocate any remaining machinery and small equipment into the newly erected storage buildings. And ensure that the equipment stored in the buildings is not visibly discharging any fluids or waste harmful to the environment. Keep clear the area in front of the garage space for space to park personal vehicles so as not to obstruct the roadway. And continue to clear out and organize the remaining materials stored between the house and the garage. And he gave a deadline is proposing uh, November fifteenth as a final inspection date for all parties. On site to bring this to a close. Um, so we talked about it the other day and um. What's your thoughts about having him move forward with this?
I think it's a good plan. It's, yes. I liked the way he spelled it out.
And it's basically pretty much what we had been asking him to do. So. I'd like to make a motion that we um, ask, uh, actually went to Chris already, but I'd like to um, confirm that um. That we approve your mo- your um, suggestion and we'll work with you almost. Uh, that was a strange motion.
That motion to approve the plan.
Yes.
Yeah, you were already been mentioned to the president.
Yeah, according to this you have, yeah, yeah. Cause so you you also sent him the same thing.
Oh, no, I was asking you whether you would already been that from.
No, I have not, not since uh, you and I talked.
Alright, so should I be following up with any letting you know that this has been approved?
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah. Um, we didn't, haven't approved it yet. Do I have a second to approve the uh, plan? All in favor? Now you can tell.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I was seeing them pretty regularly on uh, at the shaws. Um, couldn't avoid them, but lately I've seen them and it's like I'm going the other way. Um, just because I don't want to talk about it un- until we we have some closure here. So I feel like like this is the right step and and I know there's been a lot of changes that have been made. Like I said, he got rid of a couple cars. Vehicles that weren't running, so um.
He's made some good progress.
Yep. Yep. Hopefully, yeah, hopefully he'll continue to to do that. So um. And hopefully, November fifteenth, we can check in and and see how how that's gone. Alright, next on the agenda is um. April two.
Uh, I think we're on the assessors agent RFP. Uh, yeah, which you guys basically drafted and then I. You're reviewing it and hopefully improving it. So we can get in the paper tomorrow.
Paper tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, actually, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the assessors agent RFP so we can get it going. Do I have a second? All in favor? Now it's you.
Okay, well, um. I've been busy writing RFPs for all the work that we talked about at town meeting for the ramp, for the front. Repair to the building um, for the ADA bathroom. Kind of realize that all has, you know, get going. Um, so I met with Chris, who is an enormous help. And helped me put these RFPs together. And I've now run the meeting.
Chris, Jim, and the select board.
And I don't know if we're ready to for primetime tonight to approve them and get them out there, but we're at least ready to sort of review and discuss. And hopefully, whether we could take or two, we can get them out there and get started.
And also we should be clear, we're encouraging contractors on the island to apply or to to uh. Put in a quote, we want to use local people. So.
Um, so there's three RFPs. Uh, the first one, I mean, it's for the town hall, I'm calling it the entryway structure. Because it's not just a ramp, you need a platform, you need stairs on the other side. So it's a whole sort of decking uh. Situation there. Um. I'm not going to like read through it, I guess, but um, we're basically heading in the direction of looking for quotes for. Uh, some kind of custom built wood or wood like structure. We've also looked into modular prices. Um. They're affordable, but um, what I'm hearing is they're pretty chintzy. Um, for people in the dream. So.
And the point is it's supposed to hold a wheelchair.
It's supposed to look good. And we had hoped there was some nice design that was like green that would look good, but that's only available for residential properties. It turns out. So we would have to have like a silver aluminum structure, which would not look as nice. Um, so we're going to look at the wood custom build um. That could be painted to match the trim. And yeah, um, any questions, comments?
Do you have like a design that you want people to sort of look at?
Yeah, so the RFP, um, I drafted a picture and. Essentially, I described what we were looking for to the modular companies and they said me designs and then I stole it. So it's a very. Yeah, can I borrow your RFP? I could show them my lap. Yeah, it's just a rough sketch and then what we've found is if you look in at the front of the town hall, off to the right. Um, the ground slopes down in front of the town hall diagonally. An ADA ramp can only have so much. And so if we go to the right, we have a much shorter ramp than if we went to the left. Your ramp would get really long because the ground is like running away from you. Um, so the idea would be a platform at the front door, a ramp off to the right and outside of stairs. Basically.
And railings.
And rail obviously.
Yeah, fully.
Yeah, it's without the half the beam in a store.
So part of the um, RFP is for the contractors to submit a design. So we have a sense of like, what's what's their vision for this?
I think that was on you. So you you told them what they could build to.
Yeah.
But that's great to hear that you're you're gonna have some.
Some flexibility.
Yeah, so and what we get a chance to.
The entryway structure shall be designed in such a way to complement and blend in with the historic nature of the building. So it goes, you know, into wood, wood like structure, um, finish colors to match and blend in with the trim. Historically appropriate materials or finishes. So we don't know, people may have different ideas, but we want to just get into parameters and see what. Folks come back with. Um. How do you guys feel? Do you think this one is ready for primetime or should we discuss more Chris basically? You know, really help me draft it.
I didn't and I still have one concern. I lied out and I'm still concerned about the idea of coming out of the building. And making a turn to the north for wheelchair accessible and having stairs on the other side. And I I'm thinking that. That's really not according to oil because somebody in a wheelchair could would have a mishap. And go down the stairs. And and that really kind of spurs everything up and one of the things I thought was possibly. Um, if we could design something where we had rails that could be dropped in or something if if an ADA. Situation arose. Um, I don't know the answer to it. I was hoping that you would have reviewed it with Gary.
Well, the modular company that I reached out to, they did, they sent me that design and their thing is ADA, but.
I could find anything and I've been where I looked about that and I I simply don't know and I would. I don't just bring that up as something to um. To be aware of because you don't want to spend the money and build this thing.
Yeah.
And down the road have somebody take action against the town and building something that wasn't truly compliant.
Yeah.
Um, I I just can't find anything.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe they have to level level and then steps have to go down. But I I simply don't know.
Yeah, maybe they must see more of a.
Well, with the idea that you have to have a radius, a diameter that you can turn and share.
Right, yeah.
And if you made a mistake and you got too close to the edge and there were stairs on one side, no real.
Yeah, right.
You got a problem, so.
And the platform size is flexible too.
Right.
Because on the left side of the building, right in the diagram here, like five feet wide, but you could go.
Then did that.
Yeah, that's that's all I'm saying. And that's why I'm worried about uh, relying on the expertise of an outside contractor. I don't know if you folks have the. Uh, ability to um. Get help from main municipal or reference or something like that, but I would I would encourage you to do that. That's all I'm saying.
You can't bring up anything in the ADA that's in my grant here that would prohibit that. Because if you think of. If you think of, you know, this hotel, the confidence centers, you know, who get your minimum width requirements. And then you can be rolling down aisle and as a staircase, you're right there. I I I get your point. It might make sense to extend that.
Yeah, that's a simple.
Right, right. That was just the bare minimum, that.
Yeah, but again, I I would be happy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Check with the land associates. Architects on ADA. On this particular situation.
Would be great. Yeah.
Yeah, I will mention that I was at a memorial service a couple of weeks ago at a big church up in Bangor. And they had essentially the same concept as what we've been talking about. And I watched because there were quite a few people that were handicapped. And it worked exceedingly well. The ramp came up from one side. There was a good sized flat. So people gathered, talked, wheelchairs would come up, people crutches would come up the ramp and then over here is set of stairs.
I suppose you took a picture.
Of course not. But it it worked really well. So I I just watched. I said, wow. The gathering area, I think you see, because people come out the door and they want to chat. Or they're gonna hand somebody something from the kitchen or whatever. It gives them, gives everybody a little bit more space before you have to just. Get herded down the ramp like a. get herded down the ramp like a.
I think the design question, one of the design questions you guys will deal with is, do you want a small platform? That people like go downstairs and gather on the grass, or do you want a big platform? Because you could go all the way to the end of the building and have like a deck with benches and people could hang out. Um, but that might be a little more.
Might get a little pricey, but.
It would get a little pricey, and it, yeah, you know. I don't know how people feel about the historic one.
Get down, down, there you go.
Yeah, yeah. On the grass. Yeah, yeah.
In our mind, because the way the ramp's coming, obviously with ramp though, it needs to be a paved like, it's taught to have two stops for a van.
Chris says, we don't have a, so.
I, I read it and they said instead had to, not have water standing, it didn't have to say it had to be paved.
Alright, I'm looking at it from a practicality.
Yeah. I, I, I talked to two different guys, one was a aluminum modular-type ramp. And he came and he basically said that we needed to level the ground. And, and the other gentleman that gave me a quote on a built ramp was gonna do um like a concrete pads um on either end, so I mean, wheelchair-wise, I would think that it would be easier to maneuver on something that's having a little paved area for them, as, as opposed to the, just the ground.
You know, even if you only did the half, they could pull it back, bad.
Right, yeah.
It unloaded.
Right. Yeah.
And you could pay it right up to the deck boards over there.
That would be a lot back, seem pretty nice.
What's that?
That ring going.
Oh, yeah.
And they talking about pavement or concrete there for.
It's overkill. Yeah.
Unless we have the pavement truck going by.
Dropping off some stuff.
Few yards, it's over.
So I don't want this question to put off the construction of the ramp, do you think? He constructs the ramp and then worry about the paving? For that. Okay.
I thought, good.
Are we okay with your group?
To get reading specifics, you can catalog.
Right. So I think to address Chris's concern, I'll research this a little bit more, I just Google it and he emphasized, guys, not, yeah, I'm not finding anything, and it actually said, um one site, which I can't speak to, it's reputable enough, that said, the stairs, you should have a set of stairs nearby for other people to use, so that's the only reference I found, but I think we can look into it a little deeper.
Well, you're saying a platform in the south and then have a stairs with blue, or that totally.
Exactly, yeah.
Picture, you might want to amend your drawing, have a three-foot.
Right.
Flat going south and then stairs.
That's it, I thought I had, is just to hold that drawing.
That's very simple to do and not want that much expense.
Well, so if you guys are okay with it with that small change, I think you could approve it tonight and I can work on it.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the town hall entry structure RFP, do a heavy second. Again, all in favor?
Alright, so that one's ready to go, April.
Okay, next RFP is repairs to the front of the town hall. Um, and I relied heavily on Chris for this, because this is not my bailiwick at all. Um, but essentially the front of the building. Um, we talked about this at town meeting as well, and some money is coming out of the town hall reserve, capital reserve fund to cover that. Um. Folks on the town hall committee were concerned about rot from the front. It obviously needs some repainting, the paint's coming off. Um, we wanted to make sure the door was in good shape and ready to go to the ramp. Yeah, um, so a few different things going on there, Chris and I went and took a look at it, um. So Chris felt there wasn't substantial rot, or proof of rot yet, we won't really know. And Chris, actually, I'm just gonna turn it over to you, because I feel like you can.
Hold it, I'll go back. Um, regarding the actual doors themselves, what has happened is left-hand doors, you face it, the hinge, the holding the top in place is pulled away, so the door's actually gone like this, and it's binding against the other door, which makes everything possible. Now, sounds like a simple repair, just a longer screw, it might not be, but it's still a very easy repair. Um. The way that, if that building is like all the other old buildings I've worked on in Maine, and there's a bunch of them. It's a post-end beam frame, studs at intervals, and it's a horizontal one-inch thick boarding, and on top of that there's a building paper and some management coming in later, and then there's the siding. So this door is all out, and I think the screws are going into the end grain of this boarding. So we might get lucky and be able to run a really long screw in there, but in the worst case, I'll do this. We cut the casing back, cut pieces of the boarding back, install a meaningful block in that location. Runs through the streets and like thinks everything, it'll be a whole repair, it's not a big deal, so in my opinion, there's nothing wrong with the doors. Um. Now we go on to the siding, that's a different situation altogether. I've walked around the building several times, I haven't gotten totally involved yet, but um, it looks to me like three sides of the building got a total makeover in the nineteen eighties or maybe early nineteen nineties. And the work was done generally pretty well, the windows are all twentieth-century sash. Um, important feature here is that they're, um the casings are attached to the frames, and the casings hold the windows sash and the whole thing in place as opposed to layer monitoring. Anyway, I'm, I'm on rate. Um. There is some rot in a couple of pieces of window casings, and they managed to be fixed, that's why I'm bringing this up, and it's not just like punk the casing off, it's something more sophisticated than that. The siding was applied over Tycar and another product called, I think it's called Rain Swicker, it was a product that Benjamin Obdeck made back in the day. That was a woven fabric, it was a yellow fabric that basically had some friction to it. You put it up in three-foot walls and you stapled it on, the idea was that any moisture that got behind the siding would have a place to dry, so the work was done very, very well. Um, what I think has happened is one of two things, probably a combination. Um, first of all, the siding was not what I call back primed, and the cuts were not primed, and that is paramount nowadays, just the one is no good. Um. The other thing is there's a possibility that there's been some sort of a flashing failure over the fan windows. In my opinion, the cheapest and most efficient thing to do, we just tear it all off and replace it with new siding that's primed and back primed, make sure the contractor lines his cuts, and it's one of the cuts as they're going through the thing every time, and I can tell you was, I've got evidence, you know, going back fourteen or fifteen years. The work I did in Wiscassup, you know, we painted, it still hasn't been repainted. I think that will work, now, I'm not trying to denigrate the work that was done before, it's just.
We know more now.
Yeah, yeah, we, exactly. Uh, now, Jim has some questions about, and I think maybe you did tell it, but Sills and all of that, my simple answer is I can't give you a good, a good response, because I can't. What I do see is lead flashing that comes down and comes out onto the stone foundation, which projects out beyond the siding. That is a very positive feature, that, that indicates to me that somebody, when they did the work with the, with the Tycar and the other stuff, they were thinking about the fact that this was gonna hold water, and they wanted to get it away, so, so that and the fact that I've been over there with my little wire rod trying to hold, looking for rot, and I haven't found any, makes me think. But the siding will not be cheap.
Yeah, right.
Um, if you had to stop depending on where your bits come in, you could stop at Pathe Eves. You take it above both sets of windows and replash all of that, and you might be okay after that, or you could come back and buy a new one, but that's it's in my way, I think that's the only effective repair.
Very extensive, thank you very much.
Is your opinion that all four sides need it right?
No, no, not at all.
So we could step it if we had?
I don't have to walk there, maybe ever, but now, since you've led up a beating question.
Yeah.
Um, I'm concerned about the north side, because um, when I walk around the building each time, once with April and once later on, um, you can actually pick the low wall low down, and it moves in and out.
Yeah.
And, and I think that is because of decades of water running off the roof, running down, splashing back against the foundation. I think it's rotted the sheathing that I talked about a minute ago, I think it's rotten, not the sheathing, but the, the nails themselves that connect to the framing. So it might be a pretty simple repair, take off two or three layers of siding, three courses of siding, inspect the sheathing, hopefully refasten it. Replace the siding, but I'm talking about, you know, sixteen inches up, not, not.
Not ten.
Not, not, no, east side is, east side is doomed, there's no hole. Um, there's some damage on the north side. It's not terrible, it's repairable, um. There's a minor damage on the south side, but if you need to put a gutter on the north side, you put it in your budget for next year, you put a really meaningful gutter on that side of the house, because all the water's flatted back, the grade is going this way. It's contributing probably to water problems in the crawl space, but it's also just holding moisture down there, and I think that's actually rusted, and it caused the nails to fail. This is all hypothetical, but I did this for a really long time, I said, my, my life's work, it's all building.
Yes.
So, uh, I say it with some arrogance. You know, it, it's, it's.
I appreciate your arrogance.
Uh, and I'll finish with this, I think that in the future the town should set aside a more meaningful budget for um repairs to that building, so it's gonna be an ongoing thing. Um, on the, on the very back, on the west side, there's siding, string siding that hasn't been painted in God knows how long, and it looks like it's still okay, but a quote painting really helped it. And like I say, the gutter, that's gonna be some thousands of dollars, because you want to try to put an architecturally correct gutter and not just some aluminum box gutter, you know, you want something that looks good. And you probably want to drain it to the west if you can, uh, keep it away from the handicap ramp. And who else doesn't have to be a gutter, big downside, have I said too much, I'll stop.
No, that's great, but um, did you have mentioned, I don't know if it was snow gathering at the back on the, which would be the west side? Um, is that, did you see anything there?
Snow gathering?
Yeah, during, during the winter, no, no, but, but, that there was rot because of that.
There is some minor rot, um, I don't think it's substantial, the funny thing is that, see, maybe I could keep here all night, you, you, you guys shouldn't put up on that, I'm done. Most of the stuff on the west side is the old growth wood, it does, they did three sides, because that's what everybody sees in the eighties and nineties. But the old growth wood really resists.
Wow.
And I think you could wash it and paint it, and the new wood, like there's a new door there, and the casings are riding at the bottom. But most of it's in really good shape, that's, that's, then I'll be happy to spend more time with anybody, or on my own, go through and really look at it more carefully, but I've been there fourteen times, and that's my honest-to-god opinion.
Thank you very much for doing that, Jeff, you had a question?
No, I, so, yes, Chris has asked an analysis, and again, I've been covering a lot of what the other members of the three in the last two years, you're talking about saying that the problems. Uh, the one thing that I think was Jimmy Wilds, when he, when we were up, uh, at the state of the Blackwell, said that the mounting up there, the wooden, that the type was one night, which one may have been up to but also was, is problematic.
Well, so, I mean, and I'll just go out, I will be happy to help in minor details. I'm way too old to get up on the staging and tear off siding, but if it meant going up into the attic and, and through bolting something, if somebody was willing to go out on a ladder on the other side and work out a way to, to reinforce that, I mean, I'll, I'll work with anybody that wants to, that wants to help me.
Well, we're thinking reasons to, to have that be addressed as well, in terms of replacing the.
Go ahead, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, but it's about the area you're talking, well, it's the only thing that we, that I think Jimmy pointed out, because he's all this one up.
Well, and again, it's, it's gonna be some sort of a steel bracket, it's gonna be you know, it's really hit or miss, what they, what they attached it to, if there happens to be a piece of framing there, then they would have flagged it into a piece of framing. But it's more likely just to be through a couple of boarding boards, as I call them. And that you just put a backing plate behind it and, and longer bolts, it'd be a fairly simple repair, either way, you know?
Chris, can you speak to the type of wood you recommended?
I can, and again, this is my own conceit, um. We used to use Western red cedar, because everybody thought Western red cedar was great, of course, that's gone through the roof. Um, when I came to Maine seventeen years ago, I was still trying to make living as a contractor. We were able to get prime finger jointed cedar siding, which I've always been, you know, just about finger jointed wood, although again, two show, two projects I can show that held up very well. Then there was another product that came out later that actually cost about the same as the finger jointed cedar, it was called Western hemlock. And you would look at it, you go, hemlock, are you kidding me with that? Hey, these are the trees that blow over all, but, but they're old growth wood. So when you see a cut on a membrane, the, 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 the growth pattern is very, very tight. And it was readily available, Hammond lumber, I'm assuming that Hancock or under any of that can get it as well. I've seen it used lots of places, it comes through in a gray color. And I just, I believe in it, you know, I believe that anything with plate grain is less likely to draw moisture into it, so that's why I specified that.
Okay.
If somebody wants to substitute finger jointed cedar, I think that, that, again, I haven't done any of this for like five or six years. Um, the costs were approximately the same for the material, and I would settle whether you're wanting.
Gary, you're a contractor, any thoughts on what, um, Chris has been talking about? You've been around a few years.
Yeah, I mean, did you do any probing on the Sills?
You really can, I did, I, I tried really hard, but the lead flashing, you hit the lead flashing, I don't want to pull the whole of that.
Yeah.
Well, no, I doubt, and I'll tell you why. Um, typically those Sills, all the ones I've worked on, and there are several, and kind of Wiscassup, none of them was worth it. They're eight by seven, over, uh, pine hemlock or whatever they were, and they rot. So they end up with sort of an inverted L. They rot from the outside edge, and, and they rot from, um, and they rot in contact with the stone. So you could go on the inside, and unless you can tap it or sound it somehow, or run a drill into it, you still don't know. And the other thing is that there are different loads. The gable ends will be loaded heavily, and you can tell when a sill is failing on the gable end of a house, because when it gets that bad the weight of the studs is on the outside edge, the thing starts to roll and, and settle down, when I was at the water, um meeting the other night, I was sort of looking around, the inside of that going, it's tight and nice, you know, it looks, it looks like it's in good shape, you know, to me, and that, again, but I can't ask you the thing, I don't really want to know if you take a side.
Yeah, and, and John's dad's got, and the wolf's crawling around underneath the building, this, and, and the accident memory, and he didn't see any indications of rot from the inside. But, but there is that area on, on the, the north side, there's, there's a soft area towards the middle, lower down, and we were thinking, there may be a problem there, but again, you can't tell, because.
Well, and, and if somebody wants to come with me sometime, and it's all about scheduling, you know, if you want to do the you don't want to do it if the meeting's gonna be rented, you don't want to do it if the meeting's, if, if the building's gonna be, um uh, misused for elections or whatever, but I mean, I do have to go over there someday on a Saturday with somebody, and we pop off a couple of siding boards and, and take a look, I mean, I I'm fine with that, like, I, John, identifying the problem, I'm not sure what I can help you with, but, you know, but I don't know who all else is, is doing that kind of stuff.
Well, you should, you've done a tremendous help.
With all the clay ones.
Right.
And Phil, Phil deciding on the lead back and, 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 and paper and, and kind of story, and we're like, oh, and shaving board, maybe. We just get our GRP screws and zip it, and, and, you know, we're done.
Yeah, the one observation you made was making me a little bit nervous, when we kicked the wall.
Well, those boards are like.
You know, you know, those, in, in buildings of that vintage, you get the sill and mortise and tenon.
Right.
Post and.
The whole wall didn't, the whole, no, I don't think so, the whole wall didn't move, it was just the, just the sixteen inches at most, which makes me think that it's just a sheathing board, it's, those nails that I could go on all night, so you just don't expect. Buildings of that period were fastened, the nails were fastened, they were cast iron nails. The, the, you know, I don't think they're hand-wrot nails, I think it's just after that, the, the nail came into existence in seventeen ninety-five, anyway. They oxidize where there's an airspace, so I first had clients, they said, well, we've got all this great siding, it's, it's just all the siding, is the nails are all rusting. So what would happen is, we take a nail set, we hit that nail, and the thing would just explode. And the thing would just explode, and, and when you pulled it apart, you found that it broke at the other siding board. And then it's all about the shading, cause it was, there's little layers, they were just, they were just rot away, and I think that's what's happened there. But that's just neatly spaced scenario, you know, I think that's what it is. But I'll be happy to look deep for somebody, you sir, I think I'm the boss now. It's one of the things you just can't tell what's going on, try to even if you're looking. But that, that lead makes me really happy, because somebody was thinking about it. Yeah, yeah, and I think it's forty years old.
So let me ask a process question. What did we get, what did we get at town meeting for these repairs, twenty thousand dollars? Right, right. And I have a small grant that should go either way. Uh, we got ten thousand for the ramp, and I got five thousand to help with either the ramp or the repairs. So we don't have a lot of money here, what, take all the siding off and there's something really wrong, do we? Back to the town meeting or? I just wanna know what to do.
I don't try anything major, just, just because of the type R and the, and the update. That makes me think that somebody was thinking really hard about what they were doing, trying to investigate. And then the roof. Did you do all the way, the three throws, all the same number? I'm sure you did.
So we could actually talk to Evan to.
That'd be helpful, I think, you know, getting, but, but, but those aren't even in there, so we're, oh, and in a big way. And, and the work that was done was generally done very well. I made the same mistake in the eighties, I thought. You got the airspace, you don't need to worry about moisture absorption for me, yes. But, you know, I'll obey on how I know better.
Well, thank you for all your knowledge and sharing that with us.
I'm not gonna hang around. If. Somebody wants to do something on a Saturday or a weekend, if you wanna do more with the crawl space or something, you know.
Be aware, we, we will be in contact.
I don't think we did first, cause we were trying to comply.
I know, I know.
So there is a little more to do.
Well, I'll just, I'll, I'll stop after this. I remember, I think you Lisa saying at the tunnel meeting that you were applying for grants for energy audits and stuff like that. And when I walked around the building, again, I haven't got formally involved, you know, really follow around them. But there seemed to be two, I actually did go back and I opened up the basement, the bulkhead stairs and walked down and saw the furnace. There seem to be two, um. Rated spring openings on the south side, is that how you get in there?
Uh, yeah, there, there's, there's the one that, uh. Towards the back of the building, towards the, to whatever.
But, but. With that in the winter time, do you put rigid insulation over or anything like that?
Uh, we haven't.
You haven't?
I don't think we have. There's no watering, so the water turned off. So, so that crawl space is what, what they told.
Well. If you do the energy audit. I can tell you everything that an order, cause I did that also for, for years, but mine won't count because I'm no longer on main. Um, which is in mains list, so you have to hire an approved gutter. It wouldn't be a bad thing to do, I can tell you right now, the best thing you could do. Building science wise, is you connect the crawl space to the living area by. Cream membrane down under. And sealing up the walls, either with, with, with lolly or with spray foam. And then the heated area is all sort of the same. Closing up those vents. Those vents. You have to ask yourself if it's, if there's a Friday damp day in Maine. And those vents are open and, and this air is coming into ground that's at fifty-eight degrees. Are we helping or hurting? The answer is, I don't know. But, uh, closing it off totally. Without rectifying the other things, is making things worse, so you folks worked very hard for a living, I apologize for taking so much time, I'll leave now.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to propose for tonight that we put off the bathroom part.
That was really complicated, it's very complicated, we'll call you back.
So, but I, I, I feel like we, um, are ready to approve the, um, the RFP for the repairs. Let's put it out there and see what happens, what people have to say, and, you know, we really won't know anything. Um, it would be nice for whoever gets it to, to work with, Chris.
Well, what do you think? Do you, do you think it's ready to be put out there? It, the wood is, um. Cause the way it's worded is, uh. That kind of what he mentioned, or it's equivalent, so then.
I would throw it out, because again, what, what the colors. You're not gonna get stacked.
Would be great.
Is, is there any merit in adding painting the backside? To this RFP, since you're gonna have somebody there painting anyway?
Once you select somebody.
Do it as an add-on.
But painting season's coming to a close here before autumn. Painting, grassing. We're in the winter sand, so season coming in with. Transition.
Shifting, shifting gears.
Well, we're not gonna let somebody to do this work unless they're gonna be able to get it painted. We're not gonna have somebody tear the siding off and put new siding on that isn't getting painted.
It might, although, might wind, might wind up waiting to straight, that would be a shame, but.
The end of rest, September, you know. Painting, using this, you're well, which.
Chris did say, I asked him about that, I don't know, and he said, he thought a lot of this work could be done up in the left area, but I don't.
You can't paint the angle, and you sure have that siding on. Building. It's one thing to free drum something. Court of base go on, and then sew. But that last coat of paint needs to be, once all the building, so it seals everything. Even at this point, I think you're.
Trying to the sound check of it. Yes, those are already bid, and talk to whoever. To what they say.
I'm learning a lot about order of operations, because. The ramp can't really get built until the fur gets done, so I'm stuck, and I want to get that done, so get the other thing done.
But I think. The, the paving thing for that, for the handicapped area wasn't gonna be until spring.
Yeah, but we don't have any do that first, that can be an add-on and.
Yeah, it's something that can be done. Even well after. The raft belt, if it even gets done. I think it should be done. But the raft's gonna be done for her, she can pave right up to it, make a smooth. Transition right up the raft.
So we don't get anybody to. Bid on this. First, uh, on the. Front, then we really can't move forward.
Right, and the grant money I got, I think. By the end of the year, so, I'm really jammed up here, but I guess we just go as fast as we can and hope.
Let's, let's see what happens, let's see what falls out. Cause, um. If we don't get anything, then we'll go back to the drawing board.
What I learned is that you need to write your RFPs immediately after town meeting. I didn't tell me that, and then I was.
So, one of the ways you can use your grant money is if we get the RFP for the ramp, when you get that contractor, choose whatever. They could take that grant money and buy materials. Doesn't have to be for the finished product, so you're not totally out your grant money, yeah. Um, but. I understand.
So we're okay with moving the, um. Building repairs? All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the town hall front of building repairs RFP, do I have a second? All right, we're not gonna do anything with the town hall AD accessible bathroom, you guys, we're gonna get a break. Uh, how about the town hall rental policy?
I would like to do this, just because people are actively trying to rent it, and I want to get straight on this. Um, so. We're supposed to rent, we're supposed to have a policy about renting our progress, um. According to the MMA manual, we don't have one. So I wrote one up that just establishes the fees, um. And that the select board needs to come up with the documentation. For doing that. Um, that I'll administer the process. And just some basics that came out of like town meeting articles about how the rental fee to. Town hall rental into the town hall. Cap, for example. Um, so we've been talking about how to charge for. The rental, to cover cleaning costs, cause essentially DeeDee's been doing it for free for a long time. She really shouldn't be, she should be paid, should be part of her, she already gets paid to clean this and shovel snow, so why don't we pay her to clean the town hall? So we want to wrap that all in and make sure she's getting paid for her work. Um, to cover the cost of cleaning. We talked to DeeDee, um, so thirty-five is a good rental fee to charge that would cover the cost of cleaning, so. This policy raises the price for residents, which was a dollar. Um, which according to the MMA manual is illegal, you have to cover your costs. If you don't cover your costs, you're giving away tax pay money to person, and you can't do that in any different, so to cover costs. Uh, we're gonna rate, you guys are proposing to raise the fee to thirty-five for residents. So we're covering the cost of a basic cleaning, there's still a hundred dollar security deposits, someone really trashed the place, and DeeDee has to clean two, three hours. We have that covered. Three hundred a day for non-residents, non-Westport Island based nonprofits and private businesses. Um, and. Security deposit of all renters of a hundred dollars. Um, we're reestablishing the parking rental at a hundred dollars a day. Um, town office parking. Water at this parking lot is fifty dollars a day, home or clothes. So those are like the key things, it's just like setting those rates and having them in a policy. And then we go and develop our reprieve freedom, for applications and all that stuff separately, but you're supposed to have a written policy where you sort of establish the rates. So what I'm asking is for you guys to approve that new policy, so we have it on the books. Um, and then I can revise all the associated documents. And then what is the other piece of this? Oh, I want you to strike this old policy that we have on the books that talks about parking, it's very short. It's like a sentence law, and it just says. We're gonna rent out parking, um. It's from. A very long, well, not that long ago, a few years ago, actually Jeff, you were on the line board, so. So this basically. Adopts that in essence with a little bit more legalese around it. Um, and just folded into this larger policy.
And I just wanna say that, um, Friday I happened to be driving down the island and was coming back up, and I noticed, um, that DeeDee's. Car was at the, um, town, um, town hall, she was cleaning. You know, you, we met Friday night, Thursday night, all of us did, it's like, yeah, we put up the chairs and, and did whatever, but. It's like, and I don't know if somebody swept afterwards, but I can tell you that I saw the pile of. Sand that was there, so I didn't realize she was coming in basically after every single event, it's a town event. And, um, and she's coming in afterwards and cleaning up. And, um, and so, um. You know, just at least this, having a policy like this. Allows us to maybe even tuck a little bit of money away periodically when not, nobody else is renting it, cause nobody would have, that would have been town activity last Thursday night. So, um. Anyway, so I just think it's important that we realize that somebody is there cleaning up after us all the time.
And it's okay to spend money. Your money on public events like that, so committees are using it, or it's the town meeting account meeting, we pay DeeDee to clean that time, but it's a private person. Runs it, like, baggy showers, you are supposed to.
And then for places like WCA, who, um, you know, is a, rules a nonprofit. So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, approve the revised, um, town property rental policy, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yes, and I'd also like to make a motion that we strike the old parking policy, do I have a second? All in favor?
Great, uh, we have a lot of this agenda that's getting late, so.
Do you wanna? Pass one, I have actually nothing here needs to.
Well, the sign kinda needs to get going.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we go down to the sign, so we can wait on the procurement.
Do you guys have, um. Thoughts on the estimates I sent you?
You had some estimates, but I didn't see the grand total. Estimates.
One was thirteen and change, and one was nineteen.
Right, but, but with everything, and I think you had offered, um, a.
Yeah, I got, you know, cost, and then you have to focus, which I bet is him, I think, or not.
Yeah. We don't know the final cost, that's the reason. Until, kind of until we get going on the side, then you hire your electrician and so on and so forth, but.
He, he said, he said, you know, it shouldn't be too bad. Depending. Depends on CMP and that pole. That's a big thing, but I gotta take her up there and filter. Because when you measure thirty-three feet from the center line over. That puts that sign in a place that. Is gonna do no good.
Is it into the woods?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
It's, uh, but. That's why I get her up there. So, she can walk the city.
And DOT says it's okay, but it has to be upset thirty-three.
Oh, so you said thirty-three to fifty, cause I got a hundred foot right away. So, I just, I had the wheel. And what I did is I went back down the first road. So I could go. With the wheel, cause I had a way to hold the other end of the tape without getting around with my cars. So there didn't look too appealing. But further up you go towards the old store, that road next turn. Kid brings it up because I'm worried about God really. On the other side, on the bridge side of Wood Road. When you come across the bridge, that could be the way of seeing the sun. But if we move it back some. Towards where the flagpole is, not that woods, but that further south on the road.
Further uphill?
It may give you a better waters.
That's what I said.
Which is not the deal, just take that down, it's not that big a tree, there is that one.
Yeah.
That's why.
How far from the center line? In our perfect spot, how far are we from the center line?
To me.
Yeah, like where we had originally talked, right in line with the right sided white line.
You're, you're. Fifteen feet from the center line and put it in the optimal spot.
So I thought just to the left of the flagpole, we'd a good spot, so. It's, you know, a way.
Further. South you go.
Yeah, the better.
The more cost rate's gonna be higher. Make that wedge and just add ten, fifteen.
This is like the most complicated angle I worked on.
So, that was my idea of bringing it down to a floor road. To save the expense of that wedge and the hassle. So that's why we got.
We need a filter.
Oh, we need filter, yeah, and just for those of you that aren't aware, we actually have had a sign here to actually look at it, and. What we were thinking was, um, there was a perfect spot, we talked to Jim about it, it's. Down low, so it'd have to be brought up. But when you're on the other side of the bridge, just coming onto the island, there's a, it's a perfect stretch, because the, the bridge is straight. And that entire way you could see the sun, and you would see it well before you have to make the, the turn. So we had figured out where the perfect spot would be. Got Jim there to, to say, this is what has to happen, cause it's very low, it goes all of a sudden down into a ditch, but the question now is. Will DOT allow us to put something?
They will, but we just gonna hold it back for a bit, I mean, it's hopeless to. We gotta, uh.
So there's no waiver opportunity with DOT?
There is, but between thirty-three and fifty feet. So they have a fifty foot right away right there, and she said, oh, you can go within, you can get a waiver within fifty-five, fifty feet, but you have to be at least thirty-three. And thirty-three, I guess, is pretty far in.
So that's not a waiver?
No.
I wanna know, can we get a waiver for twenty-seven feet? I wanna know, can we get a waiver for twenty seven feet?
You know, DOT doesn't ever come down here anyway. I don't know.
So now now I witnessing these signs all over. Way closer than thirty three feet to the centerline.
Town of West Castle.
Yeah.
Sign on the one.
Right in front of the town office.
I don't think that's thirty three feet.
We think it is?
Yeah, that'll probably be fifty. Does that changeable zone?
Yeah, or Napa.
Yeah, that's all way out of right way.
Alright, so what we need to do is continue to do some little bit more of the. I know that there's.
CMV is gonna be a factor in this because. The more we move it. South.
More expensive it's gonna be.
Better instead of being more negative required. I don't believe. You can check the F P, but what we had at the Augusta. I don't believe you have to help their age, because they send me stuff all the time, but they have fixed objects. We're putting a fixed object in there right away. Uh and they don't want that.
Alright, so order of operations here. Go for the CMP, we need an electrician. To figure out. Some of the sign companies included an electrician, some didn't. So I was trying to figure out the sign company to see if we needed to hire an electrician to go for the CMP.
Well, we got one.
Alright, so basically we should hire. McCain, Sumner. And then call CMP and then figure out the CMP costs and the electrician costs and the DOT stuff. And then pick a sign?
You gotta get that DOT stuff. You gotta know what you want for a sign first, first that.
So we're back to square one. So did the.
Different sign may require a different electrical. Stuff. Is that the average focus or? Well, I heard, yeah, hopefully clear.
Did you guys not really?
I know, we talked about. Better, smaller. And then we asked you about the millimeters.
Yeah, so the the. Higher the number.
Right.
The worse it is. So when the guy came up with the signs and showed them.
The space between the lights.
He showed us a.
So the more, the more, remember. Your space. Those are less. Clear, it's gonna. Closer to the lights. So if you were to take a square inch and put.
So this forty fair by sixty six, single face, fifteen millimeter. That's for, that's smaller than the.
Who would recommend reading my email? Not that, because I interpreted it all into. Different sign companies use different measurements. Different language, so I tried to like make it all the same language at least. Um but Northern signs came and showed us their signs. They showed us a really big one that was fifteen millimeter and. Our impression was not clear enough, way too big. Showed us a smaller one that was ten millimeter. That's what we liked. I think it was the four.
Two, four two by a five one, so.
Well, it might have been the six three.
Fifty fifty two inches tall, I remember that. Measurement.
Yeah, the the four two by five one is almost a square. Like I drew this, because I was having trouble picturing it, so it's like. Pretty close.
Oh, you're right. It's fifty by, yeah.
And then the next step up, the the crumb dillacrum four two by six three is like a pretty classic rectangle shape. So. I think that would be the best option, but it's the most expensive. It's like, if you're gonna buy something now, so like by computer, buy the best you can right now, because the technology's gonna run away from you, but.
You need the space. How many lines on the sign?
We also have to consider people are going fifty miles an hour, so the font has to be really big, so the sign has to be big enough. Put in, you know, thirty characters.
April's going fifteen.
Four words on it.
When we looked at the examples, when we had the road sign there and we walked up to the middle of the the bridge. Four, four lines was good. After that, it was um.
Free is like the best.
For five inches high with four lines. If you go to three lines, you're up to letters that were six and a half inches high. Physically, which was so much easier to read.
Six inch line, there's a fifty miles an hour. Come on the wrong side of the road.
So if we suggest to you. Get the information on our. Yeah, I. You know, they were they. They asked about that.
Nineteen thousand.
Ninety thousand dollars?
Yeah.
You serious?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're actually thinking about this?
We have thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, it's a great.
Yeah, spend by the end of the year.
They give you stone.
I know. The article gave the select board permission to send, to spend it on a sign. We are learning the back.
No, no.
I mean, the lowest price for the crappy sign you can get now is sixteen thousand dollars. That's what the market is. These are cheap.
No, if we're gonna do a sign, it's gonna be big enough, suit our needs and big enough so people can see it. We're putting it on a corner. My biggest issue with this whole thing is we're putting a sign on a corner, so it's gonna be easy to read. Because if there's no. We're gonna have bumper cars like up in Dresden. On a straight stretch. Three, three accidents, the same stall. In a week, seven days.
Cause they were all trying to read a sign?
No, one ended up dead. He just saw he was gonna hit these cars head on.
I s- I saw that. It's like, this is not the first time that that's happened on that stretch of road, and I do it a lot. It's like, what, what?
Yeah, work on brand pickup too, they're hundred and two thousand dollars. Maybe total, course the trailer were. On a straightaway in Dresden going.
Yep, yep, and twenty seven's got wide, wide shoulders, so.
So I.
Yes.
April needs to get the sign that best suits our needs, which is the expensive one, of course.
Use that as an, as your base and talk to. And then. Because we need to get a a total cost. To see whether this is even gonna. Be workable.
It's workable. We got money. No question. McCain don't know exactly because it depends on CMP, it depends where we locate it. Once we figure that out, like nail them down closer. My price depends on where the sign is located. And. That's why I gotta get her up there to see if it's fit this thing between thirty three and fifty feet, where you can see it.
Okay. We'll do more research. I don't, I guess I don't need you to make a decision today, because we gotta.
Can you?
When do you guys wanna do a field trip?
I can do a field trip this week, you know, Wednesday after we close. Good time, Thursday, April, it's good time. Friday, whatever, you know.
Be loud here. Be in twenty minutes.
Well, talk to Ashley Dee late in the afternoon is usually better for that. Okay, um.
We can make up for it.
Yeah, so. As soon as we're back, but we're gonna hold off on that. And I'd like to go to um one of the things we do need to do tonight is to sign uh the amended snow removal contract for um. That we approved last week. We just, we had the, so I'd like to. Um just sign that. We have to do another approval? We did.
No, really.
Then we'll just sign it and we'll do everything else.
Rob Whitney, we do have to get him his security deposit back. We got like thirty days and we're starting to get up against it.
Yep.
Um so here's the, here's the conundrum. At the time. That he rented the town hall, it was a requirement that you sweep the floor. It was in the guide that he was sent. It was in the guide that was hanging out. We just amended that. We slightly reduced the renter responsibilities now, so we're not requiring them to sweep it, but at the time we were. And he did not, or not just Rob, but he runs it with the WBFD, whatever. So maybe they were tired, whatever, but it was pretty messy and Dee Dee did have to go in and do a lot of sweeping before. Whatever that next event was, the water thing. Um. Do we refund Rob Whitney in the Shore Run Town Hall or the Shore Run Association their full one hundred dollar deposit? Do we keep some?
I say we take out the amount that if he was told that he was supposed to sweep and it was in the uh policy, then. Then we we take that money out.
So would he pay a rental fee on the last? A dollar, so now.
Yeah.
The cleaning fee.
But we need to approve it into that, like just.
Um I just kind of need your opinion. I think since that. What could be with the security? I just need your decision. I agree, okay. Um. And then finally Lisa McMahon, who was um fifty dollars. Because of like borrowed chairs and tables, so she just donated that to the town hall. Very nice. Um so if you wanna approve that donation, we'll put it in the town hall fund, I guess.
We like, we approve. The donation from Lisa, Lisa. McNamara uh for fifty dollars. I'd like to uh do a headless. All in favor? And leading donor.
Thing about the uh. Uh DOT. I don't understand that.
I don't either.
I don't understand where they. Damage the road.
Yeah, because they're probably not damaging the road. Wanna.
For the contractor, in case they damage the roads. You have to waive the weight limit for the local roads. For them to do the work on the bridge, and then there's an option for the town to get a bond. From the contractor in case they do damage.
I understand why.
They're not gonna go onto the islands.
Well, even the last time, they didn't have no like.
Excavators and all that.
Nothing that would concede the weight.
Grit more for a town where you'd have to drive to the town to get to the work. They're doing the brick.
Yeah.
Unless they like turn around on.
Right, that's what I was thinking, right. And usually they keep their stuff. Up at the.
Yeah, this is gonna be.
Yeah.
You'll see. Uh. They're gonna cut the hot top down the yellow line. They're gonna remove one side. Uh levering down to the other side. And it's as simple as tearing off probably two, three inches of the hot top. And then putting, it reminds me of like ice and water seal. That is a big roll. And it round in drains and stuff, it does take a lot of time and. Sealed into the drain, stuff, it ain't just like.
I just didn't understand where the, where the danger was, but I guess this just goes out automatically. It just made even said that in the letter.
They're meeting tomorrow, so I didn't, I didn't know.
Motion to adjourn? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Alright.
And we can't go anywhere, because we have to sign a bunch of stuff.
Alright, we can stop the recording, Donald.
Let's get on.